At this time, we'll open our meeting at 7 o'clock. First item on the agenda is public session. If you're here to speak to us on an item that is not on the agenda this evening, this is the time. Anybody have any questions? We'll go on to action of the minutes on December the 11th, 2018. The minute put good to me. Motion?
You may move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
The fourth item is an informal discussion. Discuss possible redevelopment of Six Heartthwart Avenue Gas Station. Abby, I think, are they here tonight or?
No, I received an information that they would like to postpone that to the January 22nd meeting.
Next is item number five, public hearings. The first public hearing is applications seeking amendment to zoning regulations section 3.5.2 and 8.21.4 and 8.21.9, which would allow by special permit a self-storage facility in the business C2 zone and the aquifer protection overlay zone. Thank you.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the Grand Bee Planning and Zoning Commission on January 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Grand Bee Town Hall Meeting Room 15, North Grand Bee Road to hear and consider the following item. Applications seeking an amendment to zoning regulations sections 3.5.2, 8.21.4, and 8.21.9, which would allow by special permit a self-storage facility in the business C2 and aquifer protection overlay zones filed Z-23-18. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and communications will be received. Copies of the proposal are on file and available in the community development office. Information is also available on the town hall.
Who is the applicant who's represented here?
For the record, Wilson Wolf, a junior engineer in Windsor, Connecticut. The named applicant on it, I'm working on behalf of Mike Warco and Jeff Michelson who are with me tonight. The architect for the project is also here, who's Dante Body. Though it's not applicable property, the property that, because it isn't just a change in the zoning regulations, we've been in a couple times to talk to the commission about the property, which is off of Mill Pond, adjacent to Salmon Brook, and it's a real property, and the proposal would be to construct self-storage on the piece of property. The applications do, there are three applications for text amendment. One will permit by special permit, in the C2 zone, the ability for an applicant to come in and ask the commission to allow self-storage on a piece of property. And one of the caveats we put on it is that at the time that the application is made, then the procedure should be to show to the commission and demonstrate to the commission that the self-storage will not contaminate the aquifer. There are a couple mechanisms for doing this. And the concern is that somebody will take and store hazardous materials on the property. And as is the practice in many self-storage facilities, when somebody takes and signs a contract to store things in the self-storage unit, they sign a contract that says, and in it, it lists hazardous materials, materials which are not allowed to be stored in it, and they would include those which, either one are the generally known ones, or two, the ones that at the time of a special use could be included in the special use that would be prohibited in the area. And so that the person who's storing the material there has signed a contract that says, "I will not sign, or I will not store these controlled hazardous materials in my facility." As I read through the letter that came from the water company, the last paragraph of it, I think, is applicable to the application. I got it right, Bobby? Thank you. The SBD, which is the Salmon Brook District, has no objection to this land use, but does request that any such facility specifically post the restrictions on storing hazardous materials and include this exclusion on any rental contracts. So that they have basically highlighted the same as when we were here talking with the commission, that they do not have any, you know, per se objection to this type of...
All right, let's stop for a minute, because we've just been given all these different letters of papers, and I want to make sure we're all on the same paper. So is that the one from?
Salmon Brook.
Salmon Brook District?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It's on the second page, and it's the last paragraph. Then I'll read again. "The Salmon Brook District has no objection to this land use, but does request that any such facility specifically post the restrictions on storage of hazardous materials and include this exclusion in any rental contract." Obviously, the water company, and, you know, basically depended upon a clean aquifer, their concern is our concern, that we do not contaminate the aquifer, and they are suggesting that the remedy for that is what we would do, which is to include the restrictions in the contract when the people take and rent a unit. There are three items to our zone changes. One is to include the self-storage in the C2 zone. The other is to amend the zoning regulations to allow the self-storage in the aquifer protection zone. And the third is to remove from the aquifer protection zone the prohibition against having a self-storage in the aquifer protection, you know, overlay zone. So we think, and again, this is not approval of any facility, but this is an approval of a regulation that allows us to come to the commission and demonstrate that, to the satisfaction of the commission, that we will not cause any damage either to the aquifer at that time. And at that time, we would prepare, you know, more detailed information as to how it will be done.
So this first public hearing, just to clarify, we are talking about allowing self-storage under special permit in the business or C2 zone and also in the aquifer protection overlay zone? That's essentially what we're doing here?
That's what we're doing. The other minor thing is removing the prohibition from it, which is in there at the present time. But yes, the intent of it is, is to allow self-storage in the C2 and in the aquifer
I did, and I have to say, it was a very brief read, I'm sorry I did not have these earlier, but in the paper that, papers or the letter that was sent to us by the Salmon Brook District, I thought it was very interesting, above where you read, "If there is ever a pollution problem within the district, it has become the town's issue to resolve." So it would come back to the town. So this is a huge, to me, a huge, huge concern.
Which is why anybody who makes an application under this regulations has to, at that time, provide you information to satisfy you that the aquifer is protected.
Is it reasonably possible to protect the groundwater from contaminants? I mean, how is that done?
How could we do it? They've addressed a couple different alternatives with you. One is the question of the porosity of concrete, that if somebody did have something in there and it spilled, do you put a, you know, polyethylene barrier underneath the concrete, which then says the concrete is not porous, it's got a polyethylene barrier underneath it, so that if something did spill, it wouldn't go through the concrete?
Well, I would imagine it couldn't be polyethylene, because petroleum products go right through polyethylene.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me.
Yeah?
That's why I'm saying, when we do the public hearing, whatever the, but an impermeable fabric which is below there, which would not allow anything to go through, whether it's a rubber membrane or something that's, you know, impermeable, at that time would be one of the suggestions. And the other is, is that we discussed with you before, perhaps putting in a trench, you know, basically laying a two-by-four in the concrete and having it collect all of the, you know, if there were a spill, to some sort of a sump, which would have an alarm on it.
Now, I don't want to get into specifics, I'm just saying, as a professional engineer, do you think it's possible to protect the aquifer from any type of contaminants? It could be designed to...
Yes, and we would have to present that to you at the time.
You're the expert, I'm not. I'm just asking a simple question. Is it possible, in your professional opinion, to protect the groundwater from any type of contaminants in a storage facility? That's all.
Yes. I mean, there are mechanisms that you can do to make it so nothing would go through the concrete. Do I have it here today? I don't have it here.
I'm not asking that, I'm just, is it possible? You're a professional.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, assuming you have a contract with the person doing the storage to prohibit the storage of hazardous materials, and you do the necessary posting, what ability does the owner have to monitor what goes in and out of storage facilities?
I'm not that familiar with the contract. Mike, do you know what there is for access or?
Please introduce yourself.
Okay, Jeff. My name is Jeff Michelson.
You have to come forward, Jeff. Jeff, not in the hall.
Excuse me. My name is Jeff Michelson. I am a contractor. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Assuming you've done all the necessary postings and you have a contract with the person doing the storage agreeing that they won't store hazardous materials, what ability does the owner of the self-storage facility have to monitor what goes in and out?
Well, that's a little...
To ensure compliance with the contract?
There will be security cameras on the property, and the ability is a little bit limited, because the, when you rent the actual unit, and you know that they're going to come in, you can, you can walk by, peek in, but you cannot go into, after it's rented and locked, you cannot go into that unit without permission.
And will these security cameras be monitored 24/7?
They'll be monitored on a tape, yes.
But the security cameras won't be able to detect what's being brought in and out of the units, will it?
No, the only way you can see that is visually looking at that area, that specific area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The idea is generally is a notice that says, "You're not supposed to do it," and second, "if there is a problem, a spill or something," to keep that from going into the groundwaters at that time.
Gosh, members, any other questions before we put it up to the floor? Any questions? At this time, we'll open up to public comment. Please give us your names and your address.
Hi there, I'm Kristen Roach. I live at 198 Salmon Brook Street, and I've been looking into the need for these storage units, because it seems if you're going to change the regulations to meet the needs of the community, then there should be a need proven. And just within a 20-minute drive from the location proposed, there are 11 storage unit facilities. I have occupancy rates on five of those, and I can tell you that there are 549 vacant units within a 20-minute drive of the proposed location of this. We really don't feel that there is a need, and if you do believe that there is, it still seems like there are already protections in place that you guys have set up. And if to remove those regulations and put them in the hands of a couple of people working at a desk and looking at a tape sometimes, just doesn't seem like it's a very smart way to protect our resources and the people of the town. Let me just, I'll check. Oh, one of the things that people tend to store in storage units a lot is vehicles. I think you were alluding to that, that it seems like that's one of the things that people say, "Oh, I have this great Bel Air with the mint interior, I need a storage unit." It probably makes oil, maybe, you know, and things can slide out the door. Those gaskets on the bottom of storage units aren't watertight, so things can leak out into the trench there, and they can be washed away in the rain. Let's see, what else? The other concern I had is that we just built these small residences right across from Floydville Road, because the argument was made that people needed places to live with less space that cost less money. So now there's being an argument brought that people need more space, and they need to be able to pay for it. And I just don't think those two things can go together. If people needed less space, they got it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jack LaRoe, and I'm here on behalf of the Salmon Brook District. And I'm not, I would like to take just a few minutes to give a little primer on what the Salmon Brook District is. It's, the Salmon Brook Water Company was established as a private water company in 1872, and was taken over by the Salmon Brook District in 1943, which is a municipal improvement district. So it's a nonprofit cooperative that provides water to the center of town. So the south end of town is, the water is provided by Aquarian, and basically from Brook to Brook, to all the Brook crossings, that's basically the boundary of the Salmon Brook District, including this complex here. We have been trying to stay a small water company to avoid lots of regulations from the state, but with the recent development, primarily Copper Brook here, that's probably going to put us over the magic number of 1,000 residents served, which will then propel us to become a Level A, Class A water company. So we'll be basically in the same category as the Metropolitan District Commission. So we'll be the smallest big water company in the state. But part and parcel with that is that we then are required to do a Level A mapping of the aquifer, which will then actually measure where the drawdown area is. Right now, we have a Level B map, which is basically an engineering judgment on where our water supply is. The Level A mapping requires us to actually do test wells and measure the actual water flow. So I gave an example that's from the state guidelines, that shows that if you have a Level B mapping and you go to a Level A mapping, the aquifer is going to be terribly, you know, most likely will be very different. Right now, our Level B mapping stops every 10. It goes from the Clean Game Refuge to the Salmon Brook Park and stops every 10. We don't know, because we've never had to measure where we actually draw the water from. So as was previously mentioned, the self-storage area is not in our service area, but it is in our aquifer. So I guess the overall point I'm trying to make is, one is that if something goes wrong, the Salmon Brook District can vote itself out of existence, walk up to the town hall and give the keys to the town manager and say, "You now own it." So it's not insignificant consideration, what we have. And we did do that once, because we had a problem with the lighting district, and we voted the lighting district out of existence and turned everything over to the town. I'm not saying this to be an alarmist, I don't know that there's a problem, we hope there is no problem, but the point is that if we're going to address changes in the zoning regulations for aquifer protection, we ought to do it in a whole, look at the whole picture, all the different aspects that are included in that, because when we do the Level A map right now, basically, right now, we don't know where our aquifer is that we're trying to protect. So we have to map that. There are lots of other requirements from the state guidelines for doing an aquifer protection zone. We do have an aquifer protection ordinance in town, but I'm not sure that it complies with all the requirements once we do Level A mapping. So we're just asking that we look at the whole picture, and as I said in the letter, we're not opposed to the self-storage. Self-storage is an allowed use in an aquifer protection zone, but we would like to see the whole aquifer protection issue addressed in the regulations.
Yes, there's a hand in the back? Thank you, Jack.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Nimmo. I live at 37 Spring Glen. I thank you for your service to our town. I want to speak in opposition to this proposal, to this exception, because I believe that there are certain things that we have to consider in terms of the future of town planning, and a self-storage facility at the gateway of one of the entrances of our town, I don't believe aesthetically would be the most opportune use of that plot. And when I have in the past used a self-storage unit, I've gone to an industrial area, let's say by the airport, where most of these facilities are located, and I think that a proper use in another hub of our town, we have our town center, but around the Stop &amp; Shop area and with the construction of the new apartments and homes that are in this southern section of Grand B, I think that it would not be the most choice use of that plot. You can't manufacture land, and once we construct a self-storage unit, there it is. And I think that most likely it will become an eyesore and a regret to our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comment at this time? Yes, another hand.
Jean Donaghy Parent, 25, Archie Lee. I came here tonight not knowing a whole heck of a lot about what was going on in that area. I saw the posting, but I just want to stand here and back up and encourage you to listen to what people have said tonight. Number one, I think it's a big risk to the town if it ends up in our lap as a financial risk. Number two, I think it would be a horrible risk to our aquifer. I worry that, I don't know, just in today's day and age, people say they're going to do and they're going to protect and whatever, and there already, there always seem to be accidents or things that occur that put us at risk, put our water source at risk. And also with that, if you can't really monitor 24/7 what's going on in there, the people that are renting, whether it's an automobile that's stored or lawn equipment, whatever, the risk, I think, is too high. And along with having to look at it, I don't remember where that room was, if indeed this were to happen, I don't want to see it. I think Stop &amp; Shop did a beautiful job with their burn and their plantings that we can drive by and you don't see it. With the new apartments, when we were kind of talking in opposition of those, I think we concentrated so much on not wanting them that we forgot to ask, you know, make it so we don't have to see it. So now you drive by down Floydville, and there they are. And I mean, they're not ugly by any means, but if you live in that area of town, it's really not the way you want to present. So that would be my suggestion, that if it goes, put up a nice burn, some plantings, so that it's not an eyesore, because it will be, just the plain ugly boxes that are putting us at risk.
Hi, my name is Sandy. I'm on 20 East Street. So...
Thank you, Bob.
My name's Sandy Crane. I'm on 20 East Street. I've been a resident since 95 in Grand B, and I've seen a lot of changes and everything else, and I feel a little bit, it's like I don't know what the town plan is for the center and everything else, but I would just ask the town to, if there is a plan for what we want the character of our town to be and everything else, to just go back to that and read it, and it should be a nice area downtown and everything else. And I know originally, the storage units were proposed to be on East Street and 10202 in the cornfield until they were purchased by Jeffrey and everything else. So originally, they weren't going to be, you know, further in the town and everything else, and as far as, you know, spillage and everything else, there is no way. I guess that if somebody, you know, decides to store something in there that does make into the aquifer, the liability, I think what you said, Paula, is that it goes back on the town, that they have to, you know, repair that cost and everything else. And I just ask you guys as the board and everything else to look at, you know, what you want the character of Grand B to be and everything else, and to go back to that and everything else, and just, I don't know, for the residents that have been here for a long time and want to maintain the character and everything else, that, you know, they would look at that, so, thanks. Thank you.
Paula, can you turn that microphone on? Can you turn that microphone on? Or have staff turn that microphone on?
I think it is.
It's just under the table, we can barely hear people.
You can barely hear it down here.
Yeah, I'm not getting names either. I'm running first names and making guesses.
Any other comments at this time? Yes, I'm back.
Let's see if we, you hear me now? Okay. My name is Bob Nimmo. I live at 37 Spring Glen Drive. I kind of know that we can't just say, "You can't build anything in a commercial district." I do worry about the aquifer, because I live about a half mile from there. But I've also used self-storage facilities. I got transferred to Florida a number of years ago, and I know that I was walking in there at 1:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, nobody was there, I just had a pass key, I could go in and out. I could go in and out. Anything I wanted, I could put in a box and just carry it in. Paint, paint remover, lawn stuff, fertilizers, it's all there. It's all going to be stored in the facility. A lot of those cans leak. I don't know about permeable cement. I do know that the storage facility that I was using in Florida had drains in the middle of the hallway, so if anything leaked out, they just washed it down into the drain. Where that went, I don't know. I do worry about the aquifer because it is too close to my house. And that's my drinking water. Thank you.
We have other questions, Commissioner members? Erica? I'm thinking, I don't know whether I'm confused. Whether it's just so much, I don't feel that I've had time to digest the material of this matter. I don't really want to close this tonight. I'd like to keep it open for another meeting.
Max, I agree with that. You've got late submissions, and it's interesting stuff. I would like to do some more research myself into some of these issues. My professional background, as an attorney, who is pretty extensive in defending polluters, in fairness to the applicant, I don't want to say any more than that at this point. But this is a big risk for the town of Granby. Future generations are going to be relying on the availability of this aquifer. People that aren't even born yet are going to drink water from it. And in my experience, anyway, the cost of cleanup of water, the drinking water standards, you're not talking about a six-figure problem. You're talking about a seven-figure, an eight-figure, or a nine-figure problem. It can be very expensive. And I would like to think more and do a little more research before considering such an amendment.
Anybody have a problem with that? Are you all comfortable with that? I think we all need to do some real thinking.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, of course.
We had a gentleman from the public, Mr. Leroux, came up, and he talked about from the Salmon Brook District, and he said that they're going to be coming a Class A shortly water company, and at that time, they have to do a much greater look at the aquifer and have much detailed explanation as to where it is. It just seems like we're possibly jumping the gun here without information that's going to come to us in the near future.
Well, maybe we should ask Mr. Leroux when the Level A mapping would be done and available to the Commission for review.
We have to submit a plan to the State every couple of years. The last one went in in 2016. We were questioned at that with this one, and we have until the end of this month to respond to the questions from the Department of Health Services. One of the things they challenged us on is whether we are already a Class A water company because they do not believe that the population density that we claim. They believe it's correct because most of the housing where we serve is over 55, and it's usually one or two people in the houses. But having said that, within a year or two, we will definitely become a Class A water company. We're not rushing to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to do all the engineering to do that, so obviously, we're not volunteering to do that right away, but it will be done within the next couple of years. It may have to get done this summer, depending on the results of, you know, when we submit our answers to the Department of Health Services. So it is coming, and it's not in the long term, it's in the relatively near term. And clearly, if there's any additional developments, because I know, you know, there's land for sale on Route 10, that would definitely put us over the top. So we are, we do have to do the Level, we will be doing the Level A mapping. We are contacting hydrology companies now in order to plan to do that. We could move it up, you know, if that suits the purpose of the Town. We don't have to delay it because we could do the Level A mapping and not say we're a Class A water company yet. That would be a financial burden on us, but not insurmountable. But like I said earlier, we do have to look at all the regulations, you know, in accordance with aquifer protection. And Abby, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have an aquifer protection in the zoning regs now, but I'm not sure it's in compliance with what we would have to do for a Class A company.
Correct. So once Level A mapping is complete and is determined that the Town does need a formal aquifer protection agency established, the regulations would likely need to be amended so it complies and is consistent with the model municipal regulations that are put out by you. So there will likely need to be some tweaks.
We were one of the first towns to have an aquifer protection ordinance.
Well, they're all over the town. I mean, Canton has an aquifer protection.
This is way back. How many years ago was that? 20 years ago. Long time. Long time.
So everything I'm telling you is, all has happened in the last couple of months. So this is really pretty fresh for us because we get called to task by the Department of Health Services. So we are addressing that. So this is a work in progress right now. But for reading the guidelines from the State, they actually do allow self-storage in aquifer protection zones. And I think you can, it's just the restriction on what you can store. But the point that's been made is, how do you confirm that it's being complied with? So I can't address that. But in terms of what the existing model regulations say, it does allow self-storage with the restrictions on what you can store in there. How to confirm compliance, that's beyond me. I don't know. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
So at this point, we have all the information that's been given to us. I'd like to continue this until our next meeting so we can study and think a little bit more. There's a lot to, to me, for me, there is. It came in just tonight. So at this time, we'll move on. Schedule it in the next meeting, which is January the 22nd. Let's see. The second public hearing tonight is application seeking a change of zone from Economic Development ED to Business C2 for property located at 100 Salmon Brook Street.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the Granby Planning and Zoning Commission on January 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. Hearing considered following item. Application seeking a change of zone from Economic Development ED to Business C2 for property located at 100 Salmon Brook Street, File Z-24-18. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposal are on file and available in the Community Development Office. Information is also available on the Town website.
Applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
This one does have a piece of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's all right, I'll leave it against the wall over there, and then the Commission and the public can see it, so.
Okay. It's essentially what we have here, too.
This is, for the record, Wilson Alford Jr., a registered professional engineer and land surveyor. He'll be off of Mike Warko, Jeff Michelson, and the architect is Dante Bati. The property is on this side of Salmon Brook, as we're looking at it, north as to the top of this sheet. The area of the zone change is the area in green, and this is Mill Pond Drive, might have developed Mill Pond Drive probably 20 years ago. And that is C2, and this is the ED, which is the green property, which is the area which is subject to the zone change. The total parcel is slightly larger. There's a small piece of land on the north side of the parcel, which is already C2. It's the southern portion, which is the ED, which we're asking for the zone change on the property. The reason for the zone change is that we feel that it's more appropriate that it should be a C2 rather than an economic, the ED zone. And the reason is that it is more aligned with the property to the north than it is to the south. The topography of the property is such a line. Salmon Brook is to everybody's left as they're looking at it. The property generally is a plateau in the middle of the piece of property, and where surrounding the property is a very large gully. The gully is about 20 to 25 feet deep. There's a stream at the bottom of it, so that there really is a discontinuity between the property that we're talking about and the property that's to the south. It is impossible to get from this property to this property. The access to the piece of property will be through the C2 property, so it's appropriate that, since the access is from the C2, that the development be more aligned with the C2. As far as buffering to similar uses, this gully is about 200 to 250 feet wide, so that if there's a need for a buffer, there's already an existing buffer between what would be a C2 and the ED zone. So that we feel that because the access is from the C2, it's generally oriented to the C2, it's at the same topographical level as the C2. And again, the access to the piece of property, since because of the gully, it's impossible, or not impossible, but very difficult to get out to Salmon Brook. So that we feel that it's appropriate that the zone be the C2 rather than the ED.
Now, you've got wetlands that basically kind of surround it, my guess.
I did not use that term because the Town Wetlands Map doesn't show any wetlands. But there is a stream at the bottom of it. My expectation would be is that if you went out there, there's probably some wetlands that are adjacent to it, but the Town's Wetlands Map didn't show any wetlands that are...
So to the south, to the south of the property, then?
And again, I think that, you know, this is kind of when you're rezoning the whole town, you're looking at the whole mackerel, and you aren't looking at all the individual pieces. And I think this is sort of a refinement based on the topography of the area. And again, at the time that you rezoned it, this was the property line. All of this was, whatever you want to call it, probably back, it was Imperial, Coldwell, you know, Riverbend Associates. But it was all one piece of property from here to the south. And so when you zoned it initially, you know, the zone line was probably a reasonable thing. But I think that from the development point of view, it really is associated with the property that's to the north.
That's really the only, at this point, that's the only way to get in there because you've got wetlands to the west.
West, south, and east.
So really, the only way to get into that property.
Where is the access? I don't see it on the plan.
There's an access through, there's an easement that's left through, just to the east of the Dunkin' Donuts.
808?
So it would be between Dunkin' Donuts and...
808 or 809?
Medicenter? No, not there.
It's between 8...
Eight and nine?
Between nine and 10.
Between nine and 10?
Hopefully, no, I don't know that.
Yes, but there was an easement that was left there to get to the property.
Commissioner members, any questions at this point?
Well, I have a question. I don't understand what's going on. What would you be able to do if it's changed to C2 that you can't do now with it being ED? I'm a little thick. Help me out here. Why do you want it? There's a list that Abby had of what you could do and what you could not do. But it's basically that, you know, if you're talking about a good place for a zone boundary, a good place for the zone boundary between two zones is where there's a natural, you know, divide. And right now, the zone boundary runs basically through the middle of this area here, and so that this is C2 and this is ED. And so the design boundary is sort of a very artificial. If we move it to the middle of the wetlands, that creates a good buffer between different uses. And again, the access would be from, through the C2, so that it, you know, there would be very similar uses both on the, where the access is and the place that we're, you know, proposing to develop.
Is this property in the aquifer protection overlay zone?
Yes, it is.
So even uses that would be allowed by special permit might be prohibited by the aquifer protection.
Correct. The aquifer protection zone wouldn't change. It would still be in the aquifer protection.
As the first public hearing, they were looking to put that in, into the C2 zone, not the ED zone, so they need to change that. But ideally, look at this separately if you want and forget about the first one. Does it make more sense for it to be the same zone as...
Yes, so for further explanation in terms of the uses, so currently, it's zone ED. So any use has to comply with Section 3.9 of the zoning regulations. So there are very few uses that are permitted by right. So those include business or professional offices, utility uses, agricultural uses for government buildings. However, there are many special uses that are allowed by special permit approval, far more than would be allowed if it were to be changed to the Business C2 zone. So for example, biological, medical, and other research and development centers, commercial recreational facilities, healthcare facilities, restaurants, private schools, churches, manufacturing facilities. So this is pretty extensive of special permit uses in that zone currently. Should it be changed to C2, the business zone, uses permitted by right would be retail establishments, professional and business offices, personal service establishments like hair salons and ass salons, limited seating restaurants and printing and photography uses. And then by special permit, restaurants, gas stations, retail, sales, healthcare facilities, movie theaters, churches. It is important, as was brought up before, though, the aquifer protection overlay zone regulation would still take precedence. So for instance, while gas stations are allowed by special permit use, because they're prohibited in the aquifer protection overlay zone, that property cannot be used for a gas station under the current regulation.
How about automobile washers? Would they be if they're in the aquifer protection?
It must have a special permit. They would must have a special permit.
The current facility on the corner there? Yes, it should if it's in that zone.
Because we had that protection overlay in place when that was built.
Right. And under... Let's just see.
Did you talk about it was built, Jim?
When the car wash was built, we had the aquifer protection.
Yes, so a car wash is not a prohibited use in that zone.
Under C2, you mean?
No, under the aquifer protection overlay zone.
Under the aquifer protection.
So it just went through the special permit process. And then because it's in the aquifer protection overlay zone, it also required consideration for special permit under that regulation.
I thought we had a ban. I'm looking over this list. I thought we had a ban on adult-oriented businesses that are listed.
You have to have them. You can't ban them. You have to put them in some places. So that's why they got put for that.
Oh, so we put in a thousand feet from residential...
Well, we, no, when we did that, when we did the regulation on the ED regulation, that came up. And the information was you can't just, for some reason, you couldn't ban that. So it needed to be in one of the zones. And that made the most sense to put it there since it's been farming and not much else.
But you could ban it indirectly by saying it has to be at least a thousand feet from the residential zone.
Oh, sure. Sure.
And there's no place in town that can be a thousand feet from it.
Yeah, yeah, you could do it that way, Jim.
So it's also, in addition to the different uses that would be allowed under the zone change, so the ED regulation also contains other criteria that would have to be met for any development, including architectural standards. It really envisions that kind of a comprehensive development of that entire area. It's just over 300 acres. Obviously, moving it to the C2 zone, those regulations would no longer apply, which in some cases, as Mr. Alfer pointed out, it makes sense given that it is naturally due to the topography and the water course that are somewhat separated from the remaining ED zone. Any future site development application would still have to meet the criteria of the C2 zone and other parameters within the zoning regulations in terms of, you know, appropriate building materials. The commission could, you know, require a street skate buffer from Salmon Brook Street. So there are certainly, you know, a lot of considerations that have been taken into account before any site development application is approved.
Any other questions? We can roll back to public comment this time if you happen to take any comment. Yes.
Yeah, Fred Jones, I live on the next to Salmon Brook. It's formerly in the great metropolis of West Grandi, but we moved to two months ago. I have a question on this map. I'm a little confused by it. The plots in back, are those the storage areas that you're talking about, the storage?
No, that's Mill Pond Road Drive.
Point to the drawing, maybe I can help you. These exist, well, this does exist. Yeah, I could see that. Where is this?
It's Mill Pond.
It's on Salmon Brook.
Yeah. The first one you were pointing at was Dunkin' Donuts.
In relation to this, where is the storage area?
It's behind the Dunkin' Donuts. If you're on, if you were, if you were standing at the car wash and you looked at the Dunkin' Donuts, if the car wash is located, is it?
Right there.
Correct. All right, just for...
So this would be Dunkin' Donuts.
No, this is the Dunkin' Donuts here. And so if you're standing at the car wash looking at the Dunkin' Donuts, it's behind the Dunkin' Donuts.
So the next road south of Mill Pond is what it goes, please? Please introduce yourself before you...
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Don't be sorry, but just raise your hand and we'll... Does that understand it, Fred?
The question I have, I looked at this on a map and it looked, and our wetlands maps are not that good, but is, this could be looked at by the National Wetlands Commission?
So, just to clarify, so the zone change is separate from any future application? Should a site development application be made? Yes. It would have to go through wetlands approval and likely it would require delineation of any wetlands on that site?
Yeah. So, so I'll say, so is...
Correct. Yes.
This, this far here eventually goes into Salmon Brook and eventually into the Farmington River. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? There was a lady here that do have, that you would add something? Please introduce yourself again. Yeah.
My name's Amy Galant and I live at Nine Brook Pasture Lane. Thank you for tolerating my interjection. I had to look it up on Google Maps to figure out where it was. My only question at this point is, and I'm not that familiar with these proceedings, so forgive my ignorance. It seems to me that there must be a thought in mind for developing that region if somebody is asking to have the zoning changed. Is this always the process, that people come in and ask to have zoning regulations changed without proposing what they plan to do with the land?
How would you answer that?
I would say yes.
Okay.
That's the way you can do it. An applicant can come in and anybody can move to pay the fee and get a public hearing on a proposed change of zone. Anybody is entitled to do that. And the commission or the member of the public may ask the applicant, gee, do you have anything in mind? Why do you want to do this? And the applicant can say, no comment.
Okay, so if I were to ask, what do you have in mind? Would you comment?
Should I answer now or now?
I'm not going to answer.
No, no, I'm just saying, I don't want to go back and forth.
No, that's right.
We're the ones that applied for the self-storage. If we're successful with the text amendment for the self-storage, we'll come back to the commission and ask for a special use for the self-storage. And at that time, you know, a lot of your questions, you know, will be answered, you know, and some of the comments that were made in the previous public hearing, I'll probably address them now just to say, you know, that at the time, we come in for an application, we'll address the issues of what's it going to look like from Salmon Brook? What is it going to look like? There's 200 feet of trees between Salmon Brook and any part of the property. The commission has a plan in front of them. If you can see it here, there's a very steep topography from Salmon Brook, it then flattens out at the bottom and that's where the stream runs through. And then there's another steep slope that gets up to the property. This dimension here is 275 feet to this corner, so this one's probably about 200 feet back here. This is probably a little bit more than that. So there's a swath along Salmon Brook that is wooded, that's over 200 feet wide, which would be very difficult to do anything with. So if you're looking at what's going to look like from Salmon Brook, there's a large swath of property that is not going to be touched. What we're proposing to do there is to put self-storage. When we come in for that and come in with plans, the commission will look at them and they'll be satisfied as to what that looks like. As far as, you know, and as Abby pointed out, the commission has, they're going to regulate the front 200 feet as to what there is for a buffer. And so we have to satisfy them. At that time, there'll be another public hearing. People can come out, make their concerns. The commission, you know, will address them as necessary.
Thank you.
I'll introduce myself again, Crystal Roach. And I'm at 198 Salmon Brook Street. I'm interested, I have a question if you don't mind. Since this is in the aquifer barrier zone or protection zone, you would, as part of this process, come back here and ask that to be changed, I imagine?
We, I'll answer it again.
We need to, we need to separate what we're doing. We have, this is simply a zone change. Okay?
Right.
What the first public hearing about was to see whether we would allow a self-storage in that zone change if we accept it and the aquifer. So right now, we're really paying attention, does it make sense to change this zone to a C2?
Gotcha. Okay, so what they intend to use it for and how many steps it would take to get there, it's just not, it's just this one? Okay.
Thanks. You've got it in your mind and your background and we kind of know where they're going. Right now, we really need to focus on this. This is what we're, you know, looking for us now. Any other comments, please? If you'd have them? Yes.
I think, yes. My name's Bob Nemo, 37 Spring Glen. My question was going to be almost the same thing, why? And why is, because want to put in a self-storage unit? But if the town came up with a zoning map and it got approved, why would we want to change the zoning map for a developer? We want more revenue? We want more tax base? Yeah, okay. But why? Doesn't there have to be a really good reason to change the zone? Because it's already been approved, right? So we've got a zoning map, it's there. Any change has to have a really good reason. And a self-storage unit to me just does not seem to be the really good reason to change the zoning that's already been approved by the town.
We have any questions? Any more questions at this point in time before we, I think we can close this public hearing? I think this is a...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we get started, I'd just like to ask, answer the why question.
Oh, sure. Please.
Sort of hanging out there.
I would have asked you if you had anything else to say.
Before you get through.
Yeah.
I've been researching the whole history of the zoning map. At the time, when you prepared the zoning map, you know, when you prepare the zoning map, you're looking at sort of the macro of the whole town and the individual, you know, nuances of it. You're not looking at all of those. And I'm assuming at the time that you prepared the zoning map, all of this property, which is down here, was owned by, and my guess would be, I think it was probably Imperial at that time, the nurseries. And so that when you looked and prepared the zoning map, you said, well, okay, all of this is owned by Imperial, all of it ought to be zoned, the same thing, to make it easy for Imperial to develop their piece of property. Someplace along in 2002, Mike Warko and I think it was Riverbend at that time, said, you know, Riverbend said, we don't need this piece of property because it really doesn't fit in with any of our plans to the south. We can't even get to it from our property to the south. You know, it's adjacent to your property, which is to the north. The most likely development for the piece of property is, Mike, is if you buy the property from us. And so they looked at the natural barriers and said, you know, it's not appropriate to be developed with that piece of property. And I think if at the time, when we were preparing the zoning map, this was the zone boundary, excuse me, that was the property boundary, with the wetlands that are there, with the steep slopes that are there, you would have looked at it and said, well, it ought to be a C2 because it's oriented and its access will be through the C2. Let's keep all of the common. So that what it is, is, in answer to the fellow's question about why, it's because it's a refinement of what you did based on a little bit better look at the topography, which the owners did, and a refinement based on that.
Commission members, any questions or... Would you look at any more? Um, yes, yes, you may.
By that same logic, I own 1.87 acres. I'd like to subdivide my property.
I need you to say who you are, please.
I'm Bob Nemo, 37 Spring Glen Drive. By the same logic, I own 1.87 acres. I'd like to subdivide it and put another house on my property so I can make extra money. It's a refinement. It wasn't there when the map, come on. We can argue that thing anytime we want for whatever reason we want.
My response to that is...
And this is the last of that?
This is the last one. He's entitled to do that. Yep, for translation.
Okay, so...
Don't move forward. Close it.
You don't want to close this one either? If we're giving the other one open, then we should probably keep this one open also? Is that the...
I would. I'd be more comfortable keeping it open.
Why? What's the benefit of keeping it open?
It seems to me it's kind of related to the other one.
Well, just so the commission and everyone in the audience is aware, so should the commission decided it's appropriate to change the zone, any future use would have to comply with the current zoning regulations. So should a decision be made not to approve the proposed text amendment, you'd be left with a property zone business which is consistent with the remaining properties on Mill Pond Drive. And any permitted and special permit uses in the business zone would now apply to that property.
I think I understand that.
Repeat that one more time.
Yeah, so, sure. So while clearly there is some relation between the two applications, this should still be looked at as its own standalone application. So the commission, if you decide it's appropriate to rezone, you can move ahead with that and any uses allowed in the C2 zone would now apply to that property. Any special permit uses would apply to that property. And that is under the current zoning regulations. So taking the self-storage facility aside, that's a separate application, that's not currently approved in the zoning regulations. And that applicant has indicated that they would still be interested in moving forward with the zone change regardless of what happens with the text amendment application, if that's still correct.
I think so.
Looking at the topography here, you can't get to it without going through the C2. So why is it even, I don't understand how it was made economic belt and zone then. You can't get to it from the economic belt and zone. You have to go through the C2 to get to it.
Yeah, as Mr. Alfer pointed out, all of that was previously owned by Riverbend. So it does make sense that the zoning followed the ownership of the property at that time. And this isn't, it does happen where when you actually look at piece by piece, a decision can be made that it's appropriate to rezone.
I agree with Abby. Do these documents relate to it?
No, that was...
I don't know what they're related to.
So those maps were prepared for the text amendment to show the location where self-
Of which public hearing, do you know?
The first one.
First one.
Yeah.
Because I kind of think we need to separate these. I kind of, I kind of would like to forget about the first public hearing completely. Put it completely out of my mind. And looking at this parcel, are we not allowing the owner of the parcel use of his land because he can't get to it except through the C2, which makes the most sense for it to be C2?
The property still could be put to use in the current zone, in the ED zone. However, given access is through the C2 zone, it might make more sense to have uses that align with that zone. So when the commission considers a zone change, you're asked to consider if the use is permitted in the proposed zone will not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and property values of the area. So that's... So that should be a consideration when you look at rezoning that business, if that's the direction you want to move.
Question for me is, I will take a feeling of how you all feel about, do we act on it tonight, or do we wait and continue it to the next meeting?
I have enough information for myself to act tonight.
Yeah, I can cast a vote tonight, without any issues.
Okay.
I'd vote on it tonight.
You guys seem like you want to...
To close.
Yeah, okay.
Eric, you still feel like it...
I'd rather wait, I think it gives us more flexibility. It's obviously, to me, it's a package, it's roughly all in the same area. I think we're better off waiting, but it's, you know, if you think you have enough information...
I'm not opposed to waiting.
We're three of us, so I guess we'll close the public hearing.
Doesn't mean we have to vote on it.
We don't have to vote on it tonight. No, we don't, no, no, we can have some discussion and postpone that until the next time, absolutely. So we will close the public hearing. 65 days to come to a decision. Thank you all that came and helped us informate, and I appreciate all the input we can have. Number six is consideration of above applications where the commission has concluded the public hearing, and the only one we've concluded is the second about his own change. We can talk a little bit about it if we want, and then think about it and come back next time, but we don't need to go on to it.
I think, I think at least all agree that if the access is through the C2, then a problem is should be the C2.
Who's that to say?
That's kind of weird.
That's the way I look at it.
Why is it falling out? What does that...
What advantage?
What difference does it make?
Yeah, what advantage?
You know, the same owner owns the property, you grant access.
Physically, physically, you can't get to it from the EC zone. You can only get to it from the C2.
But he can get there from his input on, you know, by Dunkin' Donuts there, is there that big a difference between what he can use in either zone? Because I think they're going to be looking, at least the recommendation of the plan of development, the new one, the committee that's looking at it will come back with recommendations for different boards to work on, and one of the ones that we had recommended on that was to look at the ED zone, because that was written 20 years ago, or 10 years ago, and a lot of things have changed, so maybe want to look at different uses and different...
It seems to me there's more allowed uses in the ED zone than there is in the C2 zone.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, Abby defined it in pages 12 and 13 of her packet, and it looks like the C2 is allowing gas stations and automobile washes that are prohibited anyways because of the aquifer protection zone.
Yeah, but not car washes.
So, I don't see much difference between those. And it looks like, based on topography of this property and the access, there's no reason why C2 shouldn't be considered.
Well, on your ED zone, you could have, have a special permit, but there again, special manufacturer employing more industrial general contracting establishment, things like that, which you can't do in the C2.
While the public hearing is closed, I didn't hear any evidence that there was a problem in getting access from the C2. I did not have any evidence of that. Nobody said, gee, I went to all the owners, none of them ever talked in here. So to me, that's kind of a red herring.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, I was sort of, the access is an issue.
We can get there.
I wasn't talking about a legal right to get to it, I was talking about a physical ability to get to it, because of the differences in elevation from the plateau, which is the same elevation as the C2 zone.
But he would be going in, the way he can get into his property is by Dunkin' Donuts, there between Dunkin' Donuts...
Yep, that would be...
And the physical therapist.
Yep, I understand that.
It's very narrow.
But what Eric said was, he didn't demonstrate that he couldn't get to it through the remainder of the EC zone.
I think it's important for the commission to consider, so the ED regulations, if you read through and even the intent of that section, it's really targeted at the 300 acres in the Floydville Road area. And when you look at kind of what the regulations map out in terms of eliminating curb cuts, having an internal roadway, how the buildings relate to each other, when you look at that and you think about the vision that that outlines for that area, and then you look at this piece, which is somewhat separated, I mean, obviously while it's adjacent, you still have the topography, the waterway, so you have that natural barrier. So when you look at that piece, it'd be very difficult, at least how the regulation is currently drafted, to somehow tie that into this overall vision for that zone. So from that perspective, and you have the C2 right next door, and a sliver of the property already is zoned C2, and when you look at the different uses that are allowed, I don't see that there would be a negative effect on the surrounding area if the commission were to consider the zone change.
Kind of makes sense to me. If I can forget about whatever else is going on.
I think that was...
I think that was clouding, that's why I had hoped that they would come in with just this part first, forget the other, because this kind of makes, in a planning sense, it makes sense. Yeah. We need a Greek restaurant.
Greek?
We need a Greek restaurant.
Irish?
They can do restaurants in ED zones.
No, but in commercial.
No?
In the commercial.
They could do a restaurant involved in either.
Right, but I mean, no, what I'm saying, as far as the use that's being looked at for that piece of property.
Which they can't do anyway. Under existing breaks.
Correct.
Well, we don't have to vote tonight, unless you're all... Yeah, I'd rather think about it. Yeah, think about it. Makes sense, a little bit of sense to me, just because if it wasn't filled with wetlands around, it makes a lot of, you know, then I would say, keep it in the ED zone because it works with an interior road and all. But because you've got really the only access coming in off of the C2 zone, that kind of makes the most, that makes sense. If we can forget about the first public hearing, that makes sense. Otherwise, you're sitting there going, oh, that's the rub. We'll move on to number seven, is appointment to CROG's Regional Planning Commission. I know I tried it for a while, you...
Yeah, I tried it for a while too, and I haven't been there.
So, I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to review the memo, but CROG is looking for appointments to the Regional Planning Commission. And so this is just intended to ensure that all the member municipalities in CROG are represented on their, per their regional plan, planning processes. So I know in the past, you know, Paul Wester, a few other folks. The meeting schedule is included, so it looks like they meet five times a year. So if anyone's interested in volunteering. Eric can think about it.
Think about it, yeah. Everybody take one.
I nominated Eric.
He's retired.
It's nominated, I'm still not accepted.
No, Eric, I...
That's what happens when you miss a meeting. That's what happens when you're not here. I actually enjoyed the one I went to, but I didn't like going in. I had to come with them Thursday. Okay, well... That's where regionalization will be good, on East Grand, because they would go in and the cemetery would go in.
If anyone changes their mind, let me know, we can take a vote.
I'm sure Eric will.
I'm sure he'd be thrilled, especially unsynchronized. That's the problem. Number eight is staff reports and correspondence.
Yes, just a couple items. On Tuesday, January 15, DOT will be holding a public information meeting on the planned intersection improvement here in Grandby Center.
It's a good one.
So it's scheduled for 7:00 PM in the senior center. So I don't know if anyone attended the roundabout meeting, but it'll be similar in format, so have a design presentation and then an opportunity for questions and answers. For the commission's January 22 meeting, it looks like we're going to have to move our location because of the conflict with the Board of Selectmen meeting that night. Martin Luther King Day pushed everything, so stay posted, and I'll let you know as soon as we work something out.
We're going to go to police station?
I don't know, we have to... We do the senior center.
Yeah, we've done both. We've done the police station. It doesn't matter.
Well, I think it's going to, we're going to want more room on police station because we're continuing the public hearing.
Yeah.
I think we should make sure there's plenty of room in the senior center, I would think would make the most sense.
Abby, the 15th was the new roundabout in the sign?
Oh, no, the roundabout in this center. We got to get everybody all tied up. Boy, you know how to do it.
You know something we don't?
Maybe.
I think you do.
That would really get everybody. Number nine is commission discussion of items of interest or concern. I did it sometime, and it was before Christmas, the holiday. Dry, I drove back around behind the CVS and the trash things behind Starbucks, they were still there, and some of them were open.
Yes, our zoning enforcement officer has followed up with the property owner, and they are down to one receptacle behind Starbucks and one behind Jake's, which has been determined that that's acceptable. So, yeah, they did remove quite a few, yeah, they're up to 15 or 16.
A little bit much. Anybody else have any...
Yeah, they signed for the attorney's office at intersection 20 and 10-202.
Yeah, the gray signs.
Yeah, is that where we thought it was going?
Is there a sign already?
No, the whole foundation's in, and it's right up against the stone wall, right near...
I know.
It's supposed to be way back.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, I didn't notice that.
Yeah, because it's way up near the road. Now, my hill block, sight lines, hill...
Oh, yeah. I will take a look.
It looks, I should say, the appearance is that there was two round cylinders in the ground, and now there's a stone wall around it.
Like a planter with a circular thing in there, I'm sure for a pole or something.
Yeah, so I don't, it looked like a sound foundation to me.
All right, we'll take a look to see if that's where that is in relation to what was shown on the site plan.
Yeah, nothing but glass.
Okay.
Good to catch. Anything else before we go?
Abby, you've got the lights turned on, have you heard any comments?
Yes.
They're a little brighter than people expected.
Yes. So, we have ordered additional shields for the fixtures, which can be installed to block the light from going in certain areas. I know there's a concern with it reflecting into some people's homes, so those will be installed to block it, and then also shields on the roadside, so the light will be dispersed on either side, so we'll still provide enough illumination, but hopefully address some of those concerns that were raised.
I heard some people raised concerns about the color, it seemed a little, I don't know, cold, they wanted like a warmer shade of...
Yeah.
I heard some comments about that. I don't know what you can do with it.
Softer lights, as opposed to the harshness of the white light.
Right. So unfortunately, it's not the type of fixture where you can just unscrew a light bulb and screw a new one in. So it's one entire casing, so we're going to start with installing the shields and see how that works, because we can't easily adjust kind of the color of the light.
Can you, along the same lines, or can you tint, instead of putting it on the sides, can you tint that? Instead of putting a full black shield?
I see what you mean, yeah.
You know, street side, outside.
I'm not sure. Yeah, it may be worth looking into with the lighting manufacturer, though.
Yeah.
Before you arrived, Abby, we had approved a site plan modification for the church on Route 20.
Yes, yeah.
I don't recall seeing a lighting plan. There weren't supposed to be any major lighting changes, as I recall.
Yeah, that wasn't part of the site plan. I know they were talking about changing out some of the fixtures.
I just saw some huge foundations, that's...
Okay.
Like 36-inch PVC condo, it's used for, piers.
Okay, I'll take a look, and see what they're doing.
Anything else, gentlemen? This time we adjourn?